Good evening, welcome to the Hamlet City Council Meeting for the month of August 2014. We're certainly glad to see everybody here. I'm glad they did bring some extra chairs in, so that looks a little better than everybody having to stand up. Our first item of business will be invocation by Reverend Ricky Jacobs of the Southside Baptist Church. We appreciate you coming tonight.
More than welcome. Let's go to the Lord in prayer. A beautiful day, Heavenly Father, you've given us, and we just want to glorify you, and thank you for all that you've done this day in our lives. Lord, and now we know today, dear God, that we commit to a meeting, dear Heavenly Father, that needs your guidance, that needs your strength, dear Lord Jesus, and needs, dear Lord, people need, dear Lord, we all need understanding, dear Father, in the day and hour we live. But the Bible tells us, dear God, the only way we can ever build anything, dear Lord Jesus, that's going to stand is building on your precious word. The Bible said, "Accept God. Father, you build the house; we all labor in vain." So, Lord Jesus, tonight, help this meeting to go fine and smooth, help this city, dear Lord Jesus, to go, dear Lord Jesus, the way you want it to go. And I pray for every council member, dear God, I pray for every worker that works in Hamlet, everybody who lives in Hamlet, dear Lord Jesus, and everybody here tonight, that we'll all realize one day that, hey, we're going to leave this old world, and we want to make heaven our home. And we thank you, Lord Jesus, for your blood that you shed upon the cross of Calvary, that we can have life and have it more abundantly. So, Lord, the most important meeting, dear Lord Jesus, is when we all gather on the other side. So, Lord, let us all one day walk down Heaven's Avenue to see others, to see loved ones. Lord, have that on way today. Thank you, we love you, in the precious holy name of Jesus Christ, we pray, Father. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Gentlemen, we have before you the minutes of the last meeting, and minutes from... Okay. All right, first thing is adoption of the agenda. Thank you.
Mayor, before we continue, I'd like to, before we adopt this agenda, I'd like to take the comments from Council Number 14 and move it down after the closed session, Number 15 item.
Okay. Have a motion to move fourteen, the flip-flop, fourteen and fifteen. I have a second. You got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now we're in the right position. Okay, we have before you the minutes of the last meeting, and minutes from... You had an opportunity to go over those. Do I have a motion on that? Except the minutes is read.
So, we need to adopt the agenda.
Yeah, we need to adopt the agenda.
We've adopted the agenda.
No, we just adopted the changes.
Okay. All right. We've done that. Y'all forgive me, I'm still learning. But, okay, with that change, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda with that change?
So moved to adopt the agenda with a change.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Now we can go to adoption of the minutes. We have before you the minutes from the last meeting, and are there any changes or deletions, or do I have a motion to adopt those minutes?
Mayor, I think that included the May 1st budget meeting also.
Okay, let me see what...
I just wanted to make that clear for the recording.
All right, that's regular, man.
Y'all wanted us to know some issues with the iPads tonight.
I move we collectively adopt both sets of minutes.
Sorry.
Got a motion and a second. Are there any changes, deletions on the minutes? If not, do I have a motion to, a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, this time, we will move into the comments from attendees, and we do have on the agenda tonight Ms. Lisa McLendon, and she's going to talk to us about the information on the Raider Band Alumni Association. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Bayless, for having me tonight, and thank you for your enthusiasm regarding our program. The Raider Band Alumni Association is being formed as a community outreach project for those of us who had the privilege of wearing the uniform. We are focused on inspiring the youth of this county to dream a dream, and with our help, give them the hope and the support that they deserve, and inspire them to be the best. It is difficult to motivate a child in an era of cell phones, social media, and video games, but we believe that these children do have the potential, even if they don't realize it themselves. And we are willing to put ourselves on the line and go back and try to help bring our values back into place. Studies have shown that graduation rates with students who participate in clubs are 60 percent versus those who do not choose to participate in a club. But we need to share our history, our journey, our memories, our failures, and our accomplishments. In the mid-'70s through the early-'80s, participation in the band program in this county had an average of 14 to 1,500 students enrolled in the junior high band, not including Richmond. Today, through the county, we have less than 350 children enrolled in the band program. The average marching band in that era was 200. Today, we have 65, and we hope to increase those numbers. The marching Raider history includes '74-75 Invitational Contest in Dallas, Texas, 1977, the Burns Cup, a performance at the Kentucky Derby, Disney World, Washington, D.C., the 1982-83 season shattered the school record, bringing 56 trophies home in a single season. And for my years, standing on the field in Johnson City, Tennessee, at Marching Bands of America Grand National Competition, Richmond County was ranked in the top 1% of the United States Nations marching bands two years consecutively. That was a day I don't think any of us can adequately describe, because we were there with the best, and we worked hard to get there. But we owed it to our community, our supporters, and the alumni that paved the way for us to get there. We were not a band, we were not a group, we were not a club, we were a family, and we still are a family, and we want to continue to make that family grow. We were pushed to the limit, challenged at every turn, consistently tested, we excelled, we rose and... Core values that we learned from being a part of this program are unlike anything from elementary school through college. We learned the value of dedication and hard work, respect, leadership, a sense of responsibility to ourselves, to our family, to our community, and above all, loyalty. We were taught to teach. We hope that we can reach these children at a middle school level and earn their respect. And we, in turn, will give them that respect and stand with them and help teach everything that we can possibly teach. Teachers, in my opinion, are overworked, underappreciated, and underpaid. If we can step forward and help them in any small measure, I think that would be of great value. Mr. Bowie, I believe your wife is the cheer coach at Hamlet. My daughter participated in cheer tryouts last year, and I have never seen her work so hard in my life, so thank you. She came home every day with something new that she learned, she practiced every day, she was pushed, and she rose. And that is the same thing that we want to do. It should not always fall to the educators to teach everything. It should come back to the community and to those of us who were supported in groups such as marching band. We should all pay it forward. We see this as an investment. We see this as an investment in our youth, an investment in the future of this county. Many of our alum have gone on to do great things, many have been band directors, some are chemical engineers, we have digital designers, all willing to come back and help. Our first event is scheduled for October 31st, and I would love for you all to be in attendance. Beginning with the first graduating class at Richmond through the current class of 2014, we will join forces with the current band and create the largest Raider band in history. Our goal is a minimum of 400 alumni who will return. I have commitments from Atlanta, Georgia, Louisiana, Arkansas, and I was contacted by a gentleman in Afghanistan, and this has only been posted on Facebook. There has been no media coverage, but he contacted me from Afghanistan. I think that speaks volumes of what this program means to a lot of us. That evening, our uniforms will be T-shirts that are designed for the Alumni Association. We will march into the stadium behind the current band, beginning with the first graduating class and ending with the class of 2014. We will all march onto the field for the playing of our national anthem. We will then join them in the stands, play the fight song, and play the pep tunes, and hopefully make this a very wonderful night as all proceeds from the sale of the shirts go back into the band program. And thank you, Mayor, for allowing us to work with your Parks and Recreation Facility because, well, for me, it's only been a couple of years, but most of us, it's been a few decades since we have been on a field. But our problem is, we need funding. We hope to purchase merchandise so that we can register for the Seaboard Festival. There is currently very little money, and with school beginning, they need to purchase music, supplies, instruments, fuel, everything that you could possibly imagine that goes into teaching a child is needed. The current cost is $400 per student, and they are currently being funded at 25 cents per student. With assistance from the people of the community to help us work the concession stands, make phone calls, sell programs at the football games, help with the loading crew, we need volunteers. We hope that our passion will reach other members of the community such as yourselves, so that you will step forward and say, you know what, let's fight for our youth, let's give them something to dream. We don't want for them to be us, we want for them to be bigger than us, better than us, louder than us. We want for them to reach for that brass ring, grab it, and bring it home. And I, for one, would be very happy to see my hometown help sponsor us, take a chance on us, and let us take a chance on these children. We owe it to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Did anyone have any questions for Ms. McLendon?
Ms. McLendon, I did. I know that you're just a little younger than I am. How many, how many people were in the band when you was in the band?
My first year, 185.
And how many was in it last year?
65.
Do you think it has something to do with, I know that, you know, we're getting into a little gray area here, but the schools have changed everything to where you have to have so many credit hours and things like that, and the kids don't get any credit for being in band anymore?
Well, they do get some credit, but not as much credit as another course may offer, because it is viewed in part as an extracurricular activity, although they are learning how to read music, and so that is a fight that we know is ahead of us, but we are willing to take that on. And for the record, this was the first year in Raider Band history that the drum majors were not allowed to go to drum major camp. For some reason, I don't know if it was funding or whatever, but they were not allowed to participate, and that should never happen. I'm sorry, but if the football team can have gas, then so should the band. The band is there to cheer on the football team. They deserve the same respect as the football team, the soccer team, the baseball team, and sadly, they are not getting it. That stadium does not belong to the Raider football game. It belongs to the citizens of Richmond County, and it should be used for anyone who needs it. So what happens if the track team decides they get kicked off the football field? Are we going to stand up and say no to that? At some point, we have to stand up and say, that field belongs to everyone, and everyone should have use of that field when they need it. Only then will we get the respect that these kids deserve. And I listened to their show last night. They played with every bit of passion that we did. We owe it to them. This is our way of paying it forward. We can't pay it back. When we went to Johnson City, our parents were not asked to pay for our hotel rooms. The county took care of that, the community took care of that, and these kids have to fight for gas. So we are wanting to jump in and help, so that when we get to them at the middle school, by the time they hit Richmond, they are ready to take off running. And that's what we want to do, is just help them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming in tonight. Okay, anyone else tonight like to say something? Yes, ma'am, come on up.
I came tonight because I know that this is Marshall's last official city council meeting, and I came on behalf of myself and previous councils, both as a council member and as a mayor, and to say thank you to you and to Miranda Chavis for all that you've done for the city of Hamlet. I know Miranda's not here tonight, but if she were here, I would tell her that she has more intestinal fortitude and passion for what she does than I ever thought she would be able to muster. Where she found it, I don't know, but she did find it, and she didn't do it for Miranda Chavis. She did it for the city of Hamlet, and the depot, and the museum, and the visitor's center. And if anybody's ever seen anything that Miranda has put on, it was absolutely magnificent and professional beyond belief. It was not what you would have expected to have found in a city our size. We truly have something to be proud of. And, you know, she hadn't been here a long time, but she certainly created a huge spot for herself, and it's going to leave a huge vacancy when she leaves. But I want to say thank you on behalf of the city councils prior to you all for what she did and for putting her faith and trust in coming to our town. And Marshall, I don't know what to say to you, except you finally grew up. Marshall has been with us for 20 years, 20 odd years, maybe some of them odd, too, but you've done a magnificent job for this city. We have a great deal to be proud of, and you're due the credit, and I don't think you have to back up from that one bit. I think that you can hold your head up high and know that you did your job. I think the faith and trust that's been placed in you by the city of Raleigh is a supreme example of what you have to offer. I hope you and your family will have a wonderful new life. We will miss you bitterly, but thank you for putting your faith and trust in us and for giving us your life.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it.
What's that?
I guess I didn't know Abby was going to get up and talk, but I'm Jeff Smart, Business Manager, owner, in downtown Hamlet, Maybury's Drug, and also a former mayor of Hamlet. And I just came tonight to thank Marshall personally and publicly for what you've meant to me personally, what you've meant to the Smart family, and most of all, what you've meant to the city of Hamlet. There's not a person in this room that can't realize what you've brought to this city. We've all had issues with you, including me. You and I chose to do ours behind closed doors, and I think that's the way it ought to be done. We've cried together, we've argued, and we've agreed, and together as a team, we brought a lot to this city. And you alone, so some $20 million that you've brought to us free of charge, is definitely recognized. It's not about, all about money, but it sure helps a small town of 6,000 people. My six years as mayor were definitely enhanced because of you, and I will never forget that. Don't want to do it again, but I will never forget you. It saddens me to see you go, but it's definitely Raleigh's gain. And you and I have a lot in common. We were born and raised here with great parents, great families, graduated from high school, went off to college, and you and I made a commitment to come back to our hometown and give it all we got. Well, I know you could have gone from the very beginning and made a lot, lot more money, but to you, it wasn't about that. We came back and we did what it took to support our hometown, and you gave 20 years back, and I appreciate that. And I just want you to know that I love you, I love your family, and to me, it doesn't matter what you look like or who you are, it just matters what you bring to the table, and there's nobody that's brought it better. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say tonight that I served on this council for 16 years, and I spent a lot of them with Marshall. The citizens of Hamlet will never know how much she did for them behind the scene. Whenever I found a problem or heard of a problem, I brought it to her, and I would find that problem was taken care of within a few days or a week. Never did I have to go back and say to her, you didn't do that. But our work together over many years was very gratifying to me. We got a lot accomplished. There's new buildings here, there's new organizations here. There's a lot in Hamlet that would have never been accomplished without her. The only thing I'd like to remind us all is our loss is going to be Raleigh's gain. It's not just the money. I always said she could make more money somewhere else, but she wasn't interested in the money. She was interested in serving the people of Hamlet and serving our city councils to the best of her ability. I don't know how the citizens feel one way or the other about her leaving, but I feel personally that our city will be diminished by a great deal with her being gone. I only hope we can find someone who can take her place to give us the same commitment and results that she gave us over these many years. Marshall, I'll miss you personally, and I hate to see you go, but I know you're going to be a lot better off where you are. Thank you.
We still have time for you if you'd like to get up and say something, please, come forward. Okay. At this time, we'll close the comments from attendees. Next item of business is item number six, which is Introduction of Law Officers and Promotion and Recognition. Interim Chief Tucker.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one new patrol officer since the last council meeting. His name is Randy Dover, he's back here at the back. He's got approximately nine years of experience. He's been a patrol officer and also a criminal investigator in his, in his career, so he will definitely be an asset to the Hamlet Police Department and the city of Hamlet. We've also had a couple of promotions due to some folks leaving. Grantland Jackson was promoted to sergeant over one of the night shifts, and he was unable to be here tonight because he's just now getting off a night shift yesterday. And Ms. Heather Wyatt's been promoted to investigator, and she is here tonight. Thank you.
Item number seven, gentlemen, if you look before you is Adoption of Ordinance pertaining to Fire Code for Solar Energy Farms, enclosure number one. Ms. Strickland, do you have comments on that? Give us a little explanation, please, ma'am.
Just like to tell you, this goes back to last month when we had the solar farm ordinance, this was part of it. You'll remember, we had even a recess during last month's meeting to go out with our attorney to make changes that council wanted made to the ordinance last month, and in doing so, we just failed to get part two adopted. It's the same thing that was advertised, no changes made, it's just the appendix for the fire code, so just need y'all to adopt that part tonight.
Anyone have any question about that? If not, I would entertain a motion to adopt Fire Code for Solar Energy Farms.
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
Second. Jonathan. Any other comments on it, questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all in favor. Moving along from old business to new business, item number eight is a council appointment for an alternate member of the Lumber of Council of Governments. We didn't do that last month, so we got it on tonight.
Jonathan's been the alternate, I would like to nominate him if he would accept it.
I'll not do it again.
Are there any other nominations? If not, do I have a motion to appoint Jonathan as alternate to the Lumber of the Council?
So moved.
Oh, he's second.
Jason, Jason's second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Play when you need me.
Do it.
Item number nine is Approval of Tax Releases. I have those before you, hopefully. One of my stuff is not coming out tonight. Just trying. Computers are wonderful.
We don't really have a say-so in these.
Yeah, we don't really have a say-so in it anyways.
I move with.
For the county.
So moved.
I got a motion from who?
I have.
Okay, second. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now, on item number 10, Adoption of the Yearly Tax Statement. We need to approve the yearly tax statement, and also we need to charge the tax collector to collect taxes for the coming year. And at this time, I would take... What you have before you in the closing number three. Okay, I don't need anything off there. So I need a, I need a motion to approve this and also to charge the tax collector to collect taxes for the coming year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Yes, this is the list with names listed on it. Do we have a date that they can pay it by where it won't be in the paper?
No, this is actually the closeout, these have already appeared.
2013, yeah.
These have appeared and still haven't been settled.
And for the charge for the upcoming year, it'll be in the spring.
The ones we did before. So these, these here, settled or not settled?
Not settled.
Still not settled?
They've already been listed.
2013 tax year.
Okay.
I got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, at this time, my councilman Bowie had requested that we have some discussion on the park and recreation gymnasium issue, and I would let him at this time make comments.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, we've been discussing a gym for quite some time, and we've got to come up with a solution. I hate Mitch is not here tonight to kind of go over it, but Jerry is here. I want to look at maybe some options, because I don't know where we are on Veterans Drive. But I do know we have space out at Memorial Park, we have space out there. The baseball field, we're not using it. Over on that side, it's not been used in years, and I looked at maybe looking at trying to get an estimate, just to see what a gymnasium would cost to build one there or parallel with Highway 177, just along the fence in the corner near the park, if we can possibly look at getting something. We don't have to build it right now, but at least if we can get some ideas... We don't have to build it right now, but at least if we can get some idea of what it would cost. So, we have an idea. We're not looking for a brick structure, but some kind of structure that can be heated, air-conditioned when we need it. Because right now, the kids are in a gym, and there's no air conditioner at all. I mean, it's just, if you've ever been in there, it's ridiculous. There's no space. When you're going down by the bleachers, you're fighting, playing in a game, or sitting in someone's lap. So, you know, we need space, and we need to look at something instead of kind of procrastinating, waiting on something else to happen.
I will mention this to you, that the grant that they applied for was not approved, but they're going to reapply for it. Am I correct?
Yeah.
But I would still like to look at that possibly, and let's see what we can do and utilize the space that that, I mean, become. We're getting in the habit of splitting fields and running parents everywhere. We're running parents from one field to another field, and you already have a gymnasium there that could be used for practices. If we could have a gymnasium there for games, it would be ideal for parents that may have two kids. And I don't have kids that play basketball. Mine's in everything else but basketball. But, you know, I still respect them as well and what they need. So, if we could keep it together, that would be great. It may even be cheaper, I don't know. Just, you know, I believe that property, we own that.
No.
Yeah.
Who owns that property? And that's something we need to check with them as well.
Who owns the school?
Because the G.I.S., does the G.I.S. show that they own that?
Sure, it should.
Does on there?
We had a lease.
So, see what kind of options we can, you know, discuss with them, whatever we need to do.
I agree, Jonathan. I mean, I've been in there when they were playing, and it is...
They let us build a concession stand, so I don't, you know, see why they wouldn't let us do that.
Then you got issue with football, tackle football, are we going to play that?
Well, if you build it...
He's talking about moving to different places.
Yeah. Which I mentioned to Mitch about that not too long ago, and we kind of looked at if you run parallel with the fence, you know, along Highway 177 or on the baseball side, you kind of don't take away from the football field.
Well, my thought was Rockingham used as middle school, which used to be junior high. I mean, how did they do that?
That's been a long-time agreement that they've had to run actually several of their parks and recreation programs out of the school. We used to do it at Monroe Avenue with basketball years ago. But I guess that would be something that would be up for consideration, as long as the schedules wouldn't conflict.
Right.
But I mean, you brought up a good point. We just build a concession stand.
Yeah, then we build a concession stand. I don't see why they wouldn't let us. We may have to ask, find out.
Something to think about, maybe Monroe Avenue or something. I agree, something needs to be done.
But just something there.
Did they give permission for us to build that concession stand, or did we not?
Because it didn't change the footprint of the leased property that we currently have. We have a long-term lease for that property dating way back to Wilbers Night. And as long as we're not trying to sell it or dispose of it, they allow us to...
I believe we also redid the bathroom and stuff, too, didn't we?
We did, yeah.
That was all, we made a concession stand.
And there were a couple more things. Talk about those another time. The gym is the biggest thing right now, I think we need to try to focus on, see what we can do there.
Any other comments on that?
No, other than I just agree with Jonathan. There is a need for a better gym than what we have, lack of space and other things.
If I'm not mistaken, second bathroom is built up, and don't quote me on this, but I think it was a 10,000 square foot gym they built. It wasn't brick, but I've heard it's really nice. Maybe something that we can look at and see and kind of compare. Just an idea.
Anybody else have a comment to hear it on? Anybody in the audience have a comment on it? As far as I go. Jerry, did you have anything?
You put a gym up there where you're going to play football and soccer?
Well, that's what we talked about. And as long as it runs parallel with the fence, you have plenty of room for football and soccer.
Now, with football field running, that would force things, you know?
What about on the baseball side?
You can't, the only way you put a football field up there is it's got to run parallel Spring Street and for 177.
Well, let's look at options out there, what we can do. Even if we have to take the driveway out from the hill and level that down and build outside, take trees down in that area, just let's look and see what kind of... Because you have the driveway that comes down, just, you know, have to measure and see what we could do.
I mean, we've tried football fields by every way up there, like we played soccer and all of them.
Yeah.
And that's about the only way to run it, is parallel.
I'll get up with you and swing by. Let's look at some measurements and kind of see, because this, you know...
Look at the top parking lot, too.
Yeah, you can get it, yeah, the top parking lot.
Is that the schools, too?
Yeah. Matter of fact, Monroe Avenue uses that park.
But I'm talking that back corner bit we placed for.
Wait, that might work better, because he parked him, would be up there, too.
So, there's just some options we could have, and y'all, you know, guidance on that to help us out when we look at that.
Jerry, have we started on the Shore Nut project out there yet on that ditch bank where you come down the steps? We approved some money to do repair work.
For the wall.
Yeah, the retain wall, the retaining walls there, brick wall out by the... Now, we're talking about the side, because the front, the front is done. Brick there. Is he doing the side as well, or in the stair?
Thank you, Jerry. Thank y'all. Is that all? Okay. This time, I come to item number 12, and I would like to make a presentation to the city manager. And I'm going to put this in my pocket and hope it works. Still got me? I'm going to go down front here. Michelle, if you would, please come up. And I'd also like to Michelle's family to come up, so we can all recognize them. Everybody come on. Talk to her, Michelle. I got to see Mr. Jack anyway. There we go. This is great. Thank you all for coming up tonight. Thank you so much. Good to see everybody. Come on up. At this time, I would like to present to Michelle an award of appreciation presented to Michelle Adams-David in recognition for 20 years of dedicated service, devotion, and support to the city of Hamlet, March 3, 1994 through August 22, 2014. And I have been advised that she has really got a little over 21 years, because she started as an intern in September of 1993. So, I'm going to present that to you and hope you'll hang it in your office. Thank you so much, and I am going to miss you terribly. Thank y'all. Brianne, Brianne, good luck. Oh. And before, wait a minute, before you sit down, Councilman Pressler, I believe, has...
Everybody can sit down except for Michelle.
Oh, okay.
Well, you know, I couldn't let you go without looking good. Good. Talking a little bit. The past mayors, council members have summed it up. I've worked with you now for 14 years, past 12 years as the city manager. You're a one-tough woman spiritually, physically, mentally. I don't know many people like you. The resolve that you have and what you've done for this city and what you've tolerated, tolerated through these years. Of the 12 years that you've been city manager, I'd say at least eight of them have been full of controversy about something. And we've been through a lot of conversations, a lot of phone calls, a lot of late nights talking. We've been through, we've been through the loss of our fathers. We've been through the loss, I mean, through the birth of our kids, and more recently, what you've been through. Downtown, 20 million dollar project down there. You know, there's a lot of people involved in that. Mr. Kenley, DOT personnel, all those guys you know, the federal government that was involved, and Save Our Station Committee and the Railroad Museum were involved. But you were tasked with that project. You were the catalyst. You made it happen. I don't care what anybody says, you made it happen. And Hamlet's a better place because of downtown, what you did there, and because you've served here. Okay? It hadn't hit me yet that you're gone, but it will. Okay? I saw something, and I had to have it for you and for what you've done.
You got to be so careful.
No, no. It's that depot light. And what it says, and what it says on there, it says, "Weather the storm. Michelle Adams-David, Hamlet City Manager, July 2002 to August 2014."
Okay, while we're... While we're on that, does anyone else have any comments? I'd be glad to take comments from Michelle tonight. Everybody has any? Finishing that, we will go on to other business, and at this time, we will entertain comments from our city manager.
I promised that I wasn't going to cry, but I often lie to myself. So, I am going to try my very best to get through my closing comments. Some 21, some 20 years, 11 months, and 21 days ago, I walked into the city of Hamlet. And little did I know that my life would never be the same. You see, it is during that time that I learned some of life's most valuable lessons. And if you will indulge me for a few minutes, I will share them with you. I learned that public service chooses you just as much as you choose it. I learned that doing the right thing isn't always easy or popular, but you do it anyway. I learned that being respected is much more important than being liked, because people tend to like you when things are going their way. I learned that family is not always defined by those that share your genetic makeup. I learned that you're never going to please all of the people all of the time, but you never stop trying. I learned that the true test of your character is determined by the person that you are and the decisions that you make when no one else is looking or no one else will find out. I learned that success is not only getting what you want, but wanting what you get. I learned that when choosing your friends, you should concentrate more on quality rather than quantity. And here more recently, I learned that when life throws you lemons, rather than become a sourpuss, you make lemonade. During my tenure here, I had the absolute pleasure of meeting and working with some of the best people in this community. From them, I learned what public service is all about. Abby Covington taught me about grace under fire. Without even knowing it, she showed me that the male sex is not the greater or smarter sex, and that women can hold their own when they are intelligent, dedicated, principled, articulate, and when we deliberate from our heart as well as our head. She taught me that it is okay to give and demand respect in return. Abby, you taught me to never compromise my morals for the sake of pleasing folks, and for that, I am forever grateful. Bert Unger. Bert showed me that public service is not what you do, but rather, it is who you are. You see, I walked in here thinking that I wanted to be a public servant, but from Bert, I learned what truly it means to be a public servant, because he gave so unselfishly of himself for the good of this community. Bert, you mentored me more by your actions than you ever did with your words. And even as I visited you at Duke, when you were experiencing life-altering procedures, you always carried your sense of pride, more specifically, community pride, in your heart, even when your health was failing you. And if Bert could do it, I felt I had a moral obligation to do it as well. Monk Thomas, Nelson White, Bebe Stinson, Victor Ferris, Herbert Bruce, Tommy Smart, Barbara Freeman, Gloria Mask, Fred McGee, Barbara Cato, Robin, and Glenn Sumter, Charlotte Cowan, Celia Altman, Jim Graham, Gurney Kenley, David Gaul, Craig Newton, and Alan Paul taught me that small town does not necessarily mean that we have to have small minds. They each, in their own way, showed me that it is okay to dream, and it is okay to want the very best for our little old Hamlet, even when many people want to leave things just the way that they are. Tom McCallum taught me about being true to oneself and never sacrificing you for the court of public opinion, because the true story rarely ever comes out when ink is bought by the barrel. My city of Hamlet staff, who is truly second to none, you are my second family. I walked in here with three sisters, and I am walking out of here with a host of brothers and sisters who day in and day out work with me to enhance the quality of life for our residents as well as for each other. To my department head, you know I would've put you up against any staff anywhere, any day of the week. A special note to Tammy, Gail, Jill, and Edna for putting up with my spontaneous outburst, and you have to be at City Hall to know what I'm talking about. My love for all things UNC and my Energizer Bunny mentality, which you matched consistently. Tony Clowes, you taught me about humility. You encouraged me even when you didn't know it with your simple quotes, your scriptures, or your emails that explained to me day in and day out what others do for bad, God will ultimately turn it for good. You helped me to understand that you cannot do it all by yourself, and when you've tried all that you know to do, you take it to the man upstairs, for he will never leave you nor will he forsake you. Tony, I can honestly say that not only do you talk the talk, you walk the walk. Pat Pressler, my Pat, you taught me about loyalty and about friendship, and that is especially important these days when true friendship is hard to come by. You showed me what it means to be passionate about your work and for standing up for what you believe in. And for that, Pat, I only hope that I've been half as good of a friend to you as you have been to me. I have served under some of the best and strongest mayors in the state of North Carolina. Abby Covington, second to none. Carrie Garner, childhood friends from second grade. Jeff Smart, my dueling partner. And Jeff was exactly right, we used to fight like cats and dogs. But because we had an ultimate respect for each other, we loved this place and we loved each other. We left it behind the door, and when we walked out, we were united front. And now, to Bill Bayless, thank you for your service. To each of my mayors, thank you for trusting me enough to help to control the pulse of this community. Mayor Bayless, I hope that you can successfully facilitate the cooperation on our current board, so that we can get back to being the little town that does. To my current council, I wish you Godspeed in each of your future deliberations. I would be remiss if I did not thank Lee Matthews for giving me this wonderful opportunity back in the summer. back in the summer of 1993. You all know I have the gift for gab. I met Lee at a conference in Chapel Hill. I convinced him that I needed to be here, and Lee took a chance on me, and I've been here ever since. All the chances in my adult life have been shared with my city of Hamlet family, from my wedding, to the birth of my three daughters, to the death of my father, and most recently, the death of my husband. To my Hamlet family, thank you for being there and for always offering your unconditional love to me and my entire family. My granddaddy is now everybody's granddaddy. Everybody sees him riding or whistling up and down the street. To each of you in attendance, I say thank you. As I often mention in my lectures about the democratic process, it works best when people are involved. Most importantly, to the citizens of this great community, it has been my absolute pleasure and joy to work day in and day out to deliver the best quality of services to you, not just because you expect them, but because you deserve nothing less than the best. And to my family, thank you for sharing me for all of these years. I know I was often pulled away from you, but I firmly believe in the creed that to whom much is given, much is required. Know that I love you very much, and it is because of you that I am who I am. And as I look out and see my three daughters with their young and impressionable eyes, I just thank God every day that he chose me to be your mom. I wake up each day hoping to make you proud. So you see, tonight, it signifies the conclusion of one of my greatest journeys. I won't complain, because I love challenge comes triumph. I'm leaving here with no regrets, but rather, a renewed sense of purpose and class, for as I close this chapter, I am proud to say that Hamlet is and will ever will be more than just a job to me. It was my passion, because it was my home. To everything, there is a season, and this is my season to explore what great new challenges await me in our state capital. Thank you.
(laughing).
(laughing).
Now, no more tears.
Did you, did you have anything else?
No.
Thank you. I didn't want to take your time away from you there. Let's have what you need. One of the things that we need to do before we move along any farther then is do need to check with our supervisors and department heads and see if they've got anything. David, do you have anything tonight?
No, sir.
Okay. Jerry, do you have anything for parks tonight?
No, we're doing site registrations and drafts for next week, and the coaches will see that kids know what they want.
Okay, very good. Zach Garner, do you have anything tonight, sir? Gail?
I would just like to mention that we are accepting, we have a bid packet available for a home that we are taking down on Monroe Avenue, and we prepared the packets, we've advertised, and they can come by and pick up the packet. It is due back in by Monday, the 18th, at noon. We'll be doing the bid opening then at that time. Any questions, they can give me a call at City Hall.
And I understand that the other house we were looking at ran into some problems that we did not, we didn't handle.
Yes, sir. It would just be way too expensive for us to move on, so we will select another one and go forward with it.
Right. Thank you so much. Appreciate what you do. Jill, have you got anything for us tonight? Tammy?
No.
Mr. Morpheus, do you have anything? Okay. All right, at this time, our attorney has asked to have a closed meeting tonight to, for attorney-client.
Is there any way we can get Robert Brown to address the water situation?
Is he here?
Yeah, he's in the back.
He's in the back. Oh, okay. I thought he'd left. Yeah, I asked Mr. Brown to come up and just talk to us about what's going on with the water situation. I kind of warned him ahead of time, I think. We can probably ask him to do that.
Good evening. I am aware of all the complaints about the water since the first of July. I apologize on behalf of me and my staff. It was something that was out of our control, but I do take part of the responsibility due to the fact that we tried something different this year. I don't know whether that was part of it, whether that was all of it, but we have gone out and flushed hydrants throughout the system. We started in town, because that's where it cleared up the first, was at the plant, and we've kind of worked our way out from there. East Rockingham, I apologize to y'all. Y'all are still, you know, getting a lot of problems over there. But in saying that, y'all ought to last to see the problems also. So y'all've got to have the patience with us. We are working on it still. We're going out and flushing the areas that we're getting multiple complaints from. The odd thing is, we can get a complaint from one neighbor, and the neighbor across the street has no problems, but yet, they're serviced by the same water line. And that's an issue that I don't know how to fix. So what I'm telling people is, you know, to have patience with us, but if they persist to call the plant so we can get an address of where you are, so we can go out and flush these areas that we're still having issues with. If it's getting better, don't call. And the reason I say that is, if it's getting better and we go out and take that time and effort, then it's a wasted time and effort if we're still having those major issues in other places. But if it's not getting better, please let us know, because we are trying to work on it. We've spent hours flushing hydrants, and that's all we can do right now. It is better, and I'm asking, as we go out and flush, I'm asking these folks to call me and let me know. Did it get better? Did it get worse? Did it not change? And so far, all the feedback is, it has gotten better. So we're going to continue doing that, and we're going to keep moving forward.
Robert, I'd like to say, I didn't have a smell, but I had a taste in mine, and it's getting better.
And some people have told me that, that some people have noticed the smell and not a taste. Some people have noticed the taste and not a smell. And I, I think the best description of any that citizen called in is, and he told me, he said, "Sir, I know this is going to sound crazy, but my water tastes and smells like dust." And I said, "You know, that's actually a pretty good description of it."
Yeah, mine tasted like dirt.
Yeah. It's a, it's an earthy, musky, and primarily, it's due to algae. We've had a lot of sunlight this year. Sun promotes the growth of algae. And, you know, people said, "Well, what about the rain?" The rain can help, like the rain we got yesterday, I went to the lake this morning, and it's overflowing by three inches. So it'll help wash that, that algae out some, but it's not the rain, it's the fact that we've had such bright sunny days. Even the days it rained this morning, it rained, and when the sun came out, it came out with a vengeance. And that's part of the problem. But we are working on it, and we are moving forward with it.
And is the state still going to come and take samples?
The state, I'm actually supposed to draw samples, and the state lab is going to run some, and they're also, there's a, a separate, it's still state, but it's separate than our drinking water. They're going to come out and actually draw samples in the lake. So yes, that is in the process. It's just, again, when you're dealing with the state, sometimes things move at a little slower pace. So, but yes, we are, that is in the works. I talked with Florina Brown, which is our state rep, and we're in the process of trying to collect samples for her. So that is being taken care of. Yes, sir.
Robert, Hamlet's always been known for their good, clean drinking water.
Correct.
Always. And then all of a sudden, did you mention, or did you change the formula or the chemical or something that you normally use or?
What we did is, we went from a granulated copper sulfate to a liquid copper sulfate, which is an algae control in the lake. And in doing so, we just didn't get a handle on the feed rate. I mean, it was just trial and error. We used to have taste and odor problems every summer. When I first went to the work at the water plant in 1986, from 86 until 98, we filled up books every summer from water complaints. And we started treating the lake more aggressive with copper sulfate, which kept the algae at bay. The reason we changed was because of safety for us, for the personnel. The liquid is an easier product to feed than the granulated. With the granulated copper sulfate, we're having to pour it out of one bag into a burlap bag. They're 50 pounds. We're putting in 12 bags at a time. We're having to then lift those bags, put them in the boat, take the boat out, and then we're having to pick those bags up, hang them on the side of the boat, and drag them along in the pond. The liquid copper sulfate, we had a tank in the boat, and we were able to pump it into the tank and then pump it out as we rode around. So we changed it trying to help with the administration of it. But we're going back to the copper sulfate next year.
Good heavens. Some cities I know use, in addition to the copper sulfate, grass carp. Y'all put grass carp in there?
We do. We have, we started that 2003, 2004. I will be purchasing more carp this fall. The grass carp have a, roughly a 10-year lifespan. They are sterile. So every 10 years, we have to replace what we put in. So this fall, we will be replacing the originals that we bought in 2003, 2004.
And you may even consider putting more in there.
We're, we're going to do that, absolutely. The grass, and Chief Knight's been up at the lake when we were in the drought situation and after the drought. The grass got real bad with the 2002 drought, and a lot of that was because there was 150 yards of the upper lake completely dry. It looked like a cow pasture. When the lake filled back up, that grass, once it had established, it was there. The grass carp that we put in have taken care of the majority of that grass. But again, we have to, we have to keep putting them in there strictly because, over time, they die off, and because they're sterile, they can't reproduce. It's just, you know, it's just one of those things. But you can't put them in in the summertime because of the heat. They will not even sell them to us in the summertime. They'll sell them spring, fall, early, winter, but they won't sell them to us now.
Okay. I had two things, but after you kept talking, I have three things now.
All right.
First of all, if you don't know Robert Brown, if you've never been to a budget meeting, if you get him talking about water, he will go on for about two hours.
Yes.
But it's good to know, because he's taught me a lot about it. Another thing, Robert, can we get a phone number so we don't bog down City Hall?
Sure.
With citizens calling in?
It's 582-1117. And if you'll please leave your name and number and address, because that is the plant. The operator has duties to do, and he's not sitting there trying to answer the phone. If he's in the office, he will answer the phone, but if he's not, please leave a message, and we will call you back.
And the third thing is, is I'll put our water up against anybody's. We've always had a really good water system here. You guys have done a great job. We just had a trial and error issue. We'll get it worked out. You always do. You've done a great job with that. And I've not had any taste or odor or anything, but then again, I put mine in a squirt bottle and shoot it down, so you don't smell it. It just goes down quick. Don't think about it.
I haven't had any problems right behind you either.
But I do appreciate what you're doing. We've talked about a couple of places that have complaints. I know you'll take care of it. Thank you again, Robert.
Okay. Thank y'all.
Yeah, I'd just like to add to that, Robert. I had several complaints, went and seen you. The explanation, the explanation that we got tonight was not as detailed as what he gave me when I went out there. The city has absolutely no fault in what went on. Commends you and your staff for trying to do something to make it better, to make it easier and more efficient. I went out there and spent, what, an hour with you?
Yeah, and, and that day, you know, you even mentioned when we were up on top, the fact that you couldn't smell anything.
Yeah, I mean, you're there and you're looking at the water as it's being processed.
As it's processed, that's correct.
And it didn't look the best, but you couldn't smell it. But I did want to thank you for that.
Sure.
And, and I think the thing that I wanted to make sure we got out was the, the public to be aware of what was going on.
Correct. And I don't have a problem with that.
So we would be able to answer their questions a little bit better. But I, I do appreciate you spending the time with me out there.
Sure, sure. Y'all are welcome anytime.
Well, I, I would like to challenge everybody to go out there. If you look at that plant, I don't know how you do anything with our water and the condition that plant is in.
It's, it's over 100 years old and...
It opened my eyes.
We make the best of it.
Yeah. I appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Robert, I just want to say thank you, and I've known you for a long time, and you're very dedicated to our water system, and I hate this happening to us. I do want to say one other thing while we're on that, and I had an opportunity to talk to supervisors this past week, but the fact that the supervisors that we've got in place in Hamlet today are a tribute to Marshall's leadership, because during the time that she was out on family leave, it ran so smooth, it was unbelievable. And it's just a testament to the people she's hired and put in those positions, and I can't say anything, but thank you for that. Thank you. Thank you, Robert. I hate, I missed you a while ago. I didn't know you were back there.
That's okay.
Okay. At this time, I would entertain a motion to go into a closed session for attorney-client consultation.
So, got a motion?
Second. Second, from Jeff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hopefully, we will not be long. Session at this time, after consultation with the attorney, we don't have anything to report from that closed session, other than the fact that we just had consultation with the attorney on legal matter. The, at this time, I'm going to ask for comments from counsel. I'll start with Councilman Pressler.
I think we've covered it all tonight. Marshall, wish you and your family the best. Anything we can do in transition, please let us know. And thank you for all these years of service that you've given us. It'll all be life that you've given us. I mean, life as a being and spirit and everything you've done. Thank you. Love you.
Good luck on your, on your new career.
Thank you.
Tony? Yeah, I have several things. I did get a chance a while ago. Marshall said some, some things about me, and I appreciate that. She's too kind, but I do thank you for that. Several years ago, you couldn't have said that, Marshall.
(laughing).
But you know, the good Lord will do a work in all of us.
I know.
But there's some things that Marshall's done in her career that I think someone said it best. Lots of times, the people who do things don't put it out in the forefront. You know, they don't get that pat on the back, or they don't get that thank you. And some of the accomplishments she's made in, while here, and this is just a few of them. The Parks and Rec building over on the office, over on Front Street. Mr. Allen Cheek gave us that building, gave the city that building, donated it to the city. Marshall was instrumental in that. She facilitated the South Hamlet revitalization project. She was instrumental in getting those funds for that after the Imperial Foods fire. She's partnered with Richmond County Schools for the community and schools to be housed in the Hamlet school system. She initiated the downtown revitalization efforts for Main Street. She served two terms as board president of Richmond County Chamber of Commerce. She's done something that very few people know about. When the bypass went in out here on, close to the waste treatment plant, it kind of split some land that the city owned. And there's, how much land's out there, Marshall? Maybe an acre or so, or is it more than that?
A little bit more than an acre.
A little bit more than acre, Robert?
About 14 acres.
Oh, is it? It's 14 acres that the city owns next to the bypass, but it's land... A little bit more than acre, Robert?
Fourteen acres.
Oh, is it? It's 14 acres that the city owns next to the bypass, but it's landlocked. We can't never use it, probably never be able to sell it. But a few years back, when Progress Energy ran that transmission line out there, they wanted to go across that property. Well, of course, Progress Energy, being with the nice neighbor that they are, they wanted us to let them go across there for free. Well, because of Marshall and her negotiating, they paid us $65,000 to go across that property. And that's $65,000 that the city received just for them going across that land. And that was because of Marshall. There's several things. Somebody made a mention of earlier, she secured in excess of $21.5 million in grants for the City of Hamlet while she was here. Now, that's what Marshall's done. And that was for the water sewer improvements, Water Lake Dam, which cost us a million dollars. And we had to pay $500,000 because she got a $500,000 grant. Federal highways and infrastructure, all sorts of things. But that's just a few of the things that she done while she was here. In '06, she was recognized as manager of the year in Region N. We know just recently, she received the NAACP humanitarian award, only the fourth recipient in the 50-year history. She was the recipient of that this year. So there's a lot of things that she's done and she don't toot her own horn and things like that. But, you know, I've known her for about seven years. For Marshall and her family, I'm Mr. Field. They think I look like Dr. Field. I got his looks, but I didn't get his money. So, you know, I guess you can't have, but they call me Dr. Field. But I do appreciate her and I appreciate her family and all that she's done. I think she is dearly going to be missed. She's very, very much going to be missed. Miranda, I think Miranda, for all she's done, we're going to miss her. I wish we could bottle her energy up and put it in the water down there at the water plant. So all of us could get some of that energy. But Miranda's done a great job as well. She's done a great job down at the depot and it's amazing. It's amazing. When I walked in and she was, done the Seaboard Trail throughout town. If you didn't get a chance to do the Seaboard Trail, you missed something. You missed it. My wife and myself went one Saturday, we done the Seaboard Trail, and she showed me things I'd never seen before. She showed me where the YMCA used to be. Some of you probably didn't realize we had a YMCA. She told me about the Lackey buildings and, I mean, it was a lot of things that we didn't know. My wife was born here. I might as well be and I've been here 40 years or so. But I'm going to miss Miranda. She's done a lot. All our department heads. Robert, I know you're doing a good job. I appreciate all your hard work. I've been out a couple of times. I wasn't as fortunate as Jesse to get to catch you. Every time I went, she was gone doing something else. I did get a chance to go down to see EG's operation. So I got the byproduct of your water.
You got the short end of it.
But I appreciate all our department heads. I appreciate the citizens coming out. I appreciate everything that's being done. I appreciate this council. We are working together. We eventually get things on board and I appreciate each one of these guys. We hadn't already seen eye to eye. But I think we'll eventually get things together and we're working for the common cause of the people. So hopefully, everything will go right and it'll work well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Martin?
Everything that has been said, I would have to reiterate the same thing. Marshall, thank you for your service to the City of Hamlet and good luck to you and your family in your, in your new endeavor.
Is that it, Ms. Martin? Mr. Bowie?
Thing scares me every time. Marshall, I just, we can't thank you enough for everything you have done for the City of Hamlet. Things you've done for me in the past, took a lot of coaching and counseling. I'm a little stubborn at times, but, you know, that's okay. I do have something that I want to ask you, if I can get the blessing of the council to go along with this. My understanding is your last day is August 22nd. It's not much, but it's just something to say thank you for what I feel like we can do because we have the power, I think, to do it all together up here. I'd like to see this council pay you through August 31st. You go home and you spend time with your family. You pack your things and do what you need to do to take care of your family. I think we can give you that. 22nd's not enough. 31st, and I'd like, if I have to make a motion to do that, I will. Pay you all the way through the 31st. You do what you need to do to take care of you and your family before you leave.
Okay. I've got a motion to pay Marshall through the 31st of August. Do I have a second?
Second.
I've got a second. Councilman Fluor, excuse me, Councilman Pressler, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Enjoy it.
Thank you.
You need it. You're still welcome to hang around with the ladies.
Now you can come help me move.
I can help you a little bit.
They're going to pay for it. Don't worry about it.
What else you got? Anything?
That's all I have. Just thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate everybody coming out. And, uh, council, I know I slung that kind of on you, but I've talked to the mayor about that and I felt like that's, that's the least we could do. Can't give you a $10,000 check, but we can certainly give you a little something.
Again, I thank you so much, all the years that I've worked with you and enjoyed it. I've learned a lot from you and can't tell you how much, it's just words can't express it. I'm sorry. There's just no way to do it. And I know we're deviating a little bit tonight over several things, but at this time, one of the things that we need to cover is Marshall's last day is the 22nd of August. So we'll need to appoint an interim city manager effective the 23rd of August. And I have been asked if Ms. Kirkley would serve in that position again.
Well.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Sure.
Also, we'll, also along in that same motion, we need to do that same pay differential that we did.
I'll make the motion there to appoint Ms. Tammy Kirkley as the interim for that position and ensure that her pay is correct as it was and when we did it for the last round.
Okay.
Second.
Got a second from Jesse? Any comments? Okay. If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All in favor. Thank you. A couple of things, don't know how many people know about it, but I think everybody in here is well familiar with Mr. Earl Bradshaw. And I'm sorry that we were not able to have him here tonight, but he has just celebrated his 99th birthday.
All right.
Home with the sausage dog.
Pound.
And we had a big get-together for him at Fellowship Methodist Church yesterday and he was surprised. And I just wanted to congratulate him again before the City of Hamlet. He's a great historian for us and he can tell you all the things that are going on. So congratulations to that. Let's see, do need to mention the fact that the Hamlet Forest and Consignment has moved from their little building up there on Main Street down to the old Rice Building. And she has fixed that place up very, very nice. And I would just encourage everybody to go down, visit with her and see what she's done. And it's just great to have businesses like herself. Main Street Cafe's a big blessing for us down there and we just really appreciate the businesses that are sticking with us over here in Hamlet. And we need to, we need to go to those businesses. Over the weekend, Friday and Saturday, I believe it was, Razzle Dazzle over on Hamlet Avenue. That lady over there's been with us over a year now and she was celebrating being here a year. So I think that's great. So we stopped over and talked to her the other day. But that's a good thing. And other than that, I don't have anything else at this time and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Send the.
Got a motion? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Thanks, everybody, for being here.